My name is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Concord Planning Board, and I'm calling this public meeting to order at 3:05 PM for the Planning Board. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, we are conducting this meeting virtually, and this meeting is being recorded. Should I take roll call for the Planning Board now?
Yes, please.
All right, Ms. Orbital.
Here.
Ms. McInerney?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Those are all the Planning Board members that I see present. Anybody else that didn't call that's on the phone? Okay, let me turn it over to the ZBA.
I am Elizabeth Akers-Moore, Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, calling this meeting to order for the zoning board at 3:06 PM, subject to everything that Kristin just said about the virtual meetings. I will take roll call as well. Mr. Kindermans?
Present.
Mr. Fayah?
Present.
Mr. Smith? And Ms. Akers-Moore, present. All right, there we go.
Okay, I guess I'll take over for a few minutes. So last year, the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals got together to talk about proposed bylaw amendments, and everybody thought that was helpful. So we're doing it again this year, a little bit earlier, so that there can be a discussion on potential bylaw amendments for town meeting, which is scheduled again for June. The warrant is tentatively scheduled to open sometime the middle, towards the end of February, and close middle towards the end of March. So we'll be working on zoning bylaw amendments for the next two and a half months. And both the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals, at their own regularly scheduled meetings, did talk about some of the items that are potentially going to be on the warrant, and some that are going to be on the warrant. I can, I'll start with the Planning Board. With the modified town meeting this year, the Planning Board did postpone their warrant article to allow two family dwellings in residency zone district. So the Board will be putting that forth for the 2021 annual town meeting. Other items that will be on the warrant is the state has developed a new model floodplain bylaw, and will be requiring all communities that are part of the National Flood Insurance Program to adopt that bylaw. It is not, if town meeting were going to be in April, we would not have time to do that for April, but since it's in June, I think I can pull together a warrant article that changes. There's quite a, quite a few changes. It's not controversial or, or some, it's just, it's a lot of items they have included. Additional definitions, additional statements, additional wording, you know, warning to homeowners that, you know, just because you're, you know, you have flood insurance doesn't, you know, protect everything and anyone, and so it's, it seems to be a lot of catchalls. But it is, it is going to, for a warrant article, it is going to look like a lot of material. And then the Planning Board at their last meeting had the, under the tree protection bylaw, had the reviewing agents, which are contractors, arborists from Davy Tree, had a discussion about some amendments to the tree preservation bylaw, and the Planning Board's, their rules and regs for the tree preservation bylaw. Just to clarify certain things, the reviewing agents have been handling the tree preservation bylaw applications for the last two years. So they've, you know, this was just a, it's been in place for two years. Let's touch base, see what's, you know, where things need to be clarified or elaborated. So that will also be something that the Planning Board's going to be putting forward. Two other items that I'm currently in discussions with, the Public Works Director is under the Groundwater Conservancy District. When that was adopted, there are uses that are permitted by right, uses that are permitted by special permit, and uses that are prohibited. Almost all of those deal with quality issues of the public water supply, and not quantity issues. So there could be a project that, you know, comes in, it's within the Zone 1 or even Zone 2 of the town's public water supply, and it, it might not represent a use that could contaminate the water supply, but it could significantly impact the amount of water. So I'm in conversations with the Public Works Director on whether there should be a couple of other uses as part of the groundwater conservancy district that we want to think about. And then the, another one is the earth removal bylaw in most communities. It's an earth removal and fill bylaw. In some community, I mean, some projects, you could have, you know, 20,000 cubic yards being removed, or in another project, you could have 20,000 cubic yards of fill coming in. The, many of the impacts are the same, whether, you know, it's trucking out or trucking in. So that was something that I was going to talk with Public Works also about, and look at those changes. And then the, the two that, well, if any Board members have other items they want to add to the discussion, but the two other items that I, that the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals talked about discussing, was whether to amend the floor area ratio bylaw. And the Planning Board's discussion talked about the possibility of, currently, the formula for the floor area ratio is the same for all four residential districts, and whether, you know, it should be a sliding scale. And also, a conversation between the zoning board with the Planning Board on your experience on the effectiveness of the floor area ratio bylaw since it's been adopted. And then the last item for discussion, it's, it's primarily a Planning Board discussion item, deals with the recent amendments to the planned residential development, and clarification on one of the new items that was recently adopted. So those are every, that's everything on my plate. And if you want me to start anywhere, or if the Boards want, and want to start their conversation, I leave it up to you.
Thank you, that's, that's a fabulous summary. I would say, the questions that most often, that we have, the Planning Board has, when we're together, that, that we'd like to have a dialogue about, is definitely the FAR ratio, or the FAR bylaw, tree bylaw, and earth removal. So I want to make sure we, we focus on, on those. And, and really kind of talk to the ZBA. I think some of the questions that we get, and that we have as, as Board members is, you know, why, why are there so many large houses? And, and why can't we stop the, the large houses? And it's a bigger question than that, but I want to make sure we understand what our bylaws are allowing, and what they're not, so that we understand it well enough to explain it to the public, and that if there are potential amendments, we make them within the scope of what Elizabeth was talking about today. We're not, we're not getting crazy right now, but just to make sure that we understand. But Elizabeth, Elizabeth Akers-Moore, you know, from the, from the perspective of the ZBA, maybe you can share of the list that Elizabeth talked about. You know, anything popping up that you guys see repeatedly that you want to make sure you hear our perspective about, and that can maybe facilitate the beginning of the conversation.
Sure, I mean, I think we should probably start with FAR, because I would say that tree removal, we have not dealt, we haven't discussed really, and earth removal either. So why don't we start with that? We get the same questions that you probably get. There's confusion, again, when people come for the FAR versus the floor area, the, going over the 150% of the, Elizabeth, you can say this in a way that actually is intelligent. I can't.
It's Section 7.1.5 of the zoning bylaw that allows the expansion of a non-conforming structure by more than 50%.
And Elizabeth, it's a gross floor rate area instead of the...
Instead of the FAR. So when people, they kind of, I think there was a feeling that the FAR would just prevent anything from getting too big, and that's, we're operating with two different sets of, of rules under two different standards here. But I, we talked about this a little bit with the FAR, and how we thought it was working out. It sounded like where we were headed with it is that the deterrent factor might be more than the actual, that it's preventing large houses from, from being, or additions being built. This is the first I've heard about a sliding scale. I don't know, we haven't discussed that. But that's, I think that's worth talking about. So Jim, did you want to say anything about having that, both boards?
Both boards, like, 35 years apart. Before I forget, and just, just to put a little pushpin in it for later in the conversation, I think we should also talk about the height issue, the, how we measure height, and the fact that sometimes that creates a particular issue, because in certain sections, it's a very, it turns out to be a variance instead of a special permit. But I would say that, just to frame the discussion a little bit, so we rarely run into a floor area ratio anti-mansionization situation. Where it happens tends to be in places like Devon Street, or, or Middle Street, or that part of, you know, sort of Concord Center, where you have existing large houses that are in excess of the floor area ratio already, grandfathered by that, by grandfathered dwellings. And they want to make some sort of change. So they want to add a dormer, they want to add a playroom, or they want to do whatever they want to do. And, and as a consequence, they're making the, the large, the already large house compared to the lot into, into a slightly larger house. That is where, I would say, in our experience probably, and we talked about this last time, I don't think we've, we've seen anything other than that of any sort of scale. Now, people do, when they're dealing with a, can, a, increasing the size of a house on a non-conforming lot by more than 150%, they do provide the floor area ratio. And every once in a while, you see somebody who's getting close to it, and obviously, it is a deterrent. There's no question about the fact that probably they might build even a bigger house, but they're not asking us for that relief. And I think that the reason that they're not asking us for that relief is that the Board has taken a pretty strong position that it's really hard to get that relief. That this isn't like a regular special permit, that some people get it, some, I mean, that, you know, you really have to show some hardship in order to be able to achieve the relief. So I think that's conveyed by the planning staff, and, and the building inspector, and everybody else. And so I just don't think we see that many cases. Just flipping back, and, and this is where the sliding scale may be of use, et cetera, is that in the non, the typical place where larger houses are being built in Concord, are not floor area ratio, but rather non-conforming, conforming and non-conforming lots, in which people are putting bigger homes on them. Where, where it's a conforming lot, and the house is conforming in every other way, the floor area ratio in most of our jurisdictions is such that it's a pretty massive house. You know, it's a pretty massive house, and so, and, and a massive house by right, we would never even see it. And so I think that that, you know, that's the start. When we deal with houses going over 150%, to be honest, our calculations tend to go in the following order. First, are there a lot of lots in the surrounding area that are also non-conforming? Because if there are, then we as a Board have a lot of control over that particular area and what it looks like. A good example was, I believe, Chestnut Street, a particular portion of Chestnut Street, in which every single lot is non-conforming. And every single other person who had built an extension or whatever on their house had all stayed under the 150% level. And somebody was trying to come in there and build something bigger. And it was very easy to say that this doesn't fit the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, because it was a neighborhood of small homes. A flip example was one on Bedford Street, or Old Bedford Street, in which, you know, they wanted to build a bigger house, but if you looked around, and that house right then would not have necessarily fit into the character of the neighborhood, the bigger house. There were a lot of smaller houses. But almost all those smaller houses were on perfectly conforming lots. And so when those were sold, and the developer bought these next ones, they were going to be able to put up big houses. So if we stopped the one house from being too big, it would just be a very small house in a neighborhood of otherwise big houses, if you look at it down the road. And so those tend to be the, those tend to be the way that those get looked at. Obviously, we look at things like, you know, neighbor disapproval, et cetera. And the only other thing I'd add, and I realize I've been talking a lot, the only other thing I'd add is that, what's interesting to me is that our, our measurements are basically floor area. And then, of course, we're all subject to the height restrictions. But I've seen neighborhoods where people put up a 3,000-square-foot house next to another 3,000-square-foot house, virtually identical. But the original 3,000-square-foot house was built 35 years ago, and had seven foot, you know, seven and a half foot ceilings or whatever. And the new one has 10-foot ceilings, and it meets the height requirement. But if you just look at them from the street, it looks twice as, it literally looks twice as big as the house that's next door, even though, again, it's very, very hard for us to stop a person from building a 3,000-square-foot house if the five houses around it are all 3,000-square-foot houses. So it's, and so you see that, you see that phenomenon. I think in Ash and Birch, and whatever the street is that connects those two, begins with an R, I live next to it, but that, there was a particular one there, where literally all the houses around were roughly the same size, but this new house looks, just looks bigger than the houses around it because of that.
That's helpful.
Um, yeah, and I, just to follow on that, I think basically, I can't, this is, when we were talking about this before, I can't think of a time that I think the FAR stopped us from having someone do mansionization. I think maybe in the background, what we're not seeing is people not coming to us originally, is like, like Jim said. But in terms of, is it working for us to not have really big houses being built? I wouldn't say that's the main mechanism unless it's a deterrent.
We've got relatively new Planning Board members on this call, and by that, I mean, in the last, you know, a couple of years. So they have new and fresh perspectives. So I want to make sure that, you know, Linda, Kate, and Haley, that you guys ask the questions that you've seen come up. So please speak up, yeah, go ahead, Kate.
Thank you, that was so, that was really helpful, Jim. I thank you. I just have a, have a question, a quick question and a lengthier question. Somebody said that they can build massive houses by right, that was not really being limited by the FAR. Is that by right under our bylaw, or is there something in the state, like the state regulations, that limit what we can do to limit the FAR?
There's, there's nothing in state regulations that limits the overall square footage of a dwelling. The limitation under the zoning act says that towns can't say, "You can only have one bathroom," and "you can only have a bedroom on the first floor," or "you can't regulate the interior floor plan of the dwelling." So that's what's under state law. So it's, a lot of people think, think that deals with square footage. I mean, deals with being able to limit, that you can't limit a house. Well, you, you can limit overall square footage, but a community can't limit how the interior of the house is utilized.
Okay.
And, and I think that I'd just add that, and the FARs are really big houses. I mean, I mean, I think that what people are seeing is they're seeing, you know, 2,000, 2,500-type square-foot houses turn into 35,000 or 4,000 square-foot houses, where the FAR might be 5,500 or 6,000 square feet. And, and I'll admit that a 6,000-square-foot house is a really big house, but so is a 4,500-square-foot house when all of the ones around it are 2,250 square feet. And, and if it's a conforming lot in all respects, then the only, and if they're going to build a house with setbacks and all that stuff right, then the only limitation on the house size is the FAR. So now, that, you know, anybody who's got a conforming lot in that area can all build like 5,000, I'm, I'm just making this up, but, you know, they can build like 5,900 square-foot houses, where there used to be 2,000 square-foot houses, and you'd still do it. So the only way you could fix that problem, that particular part of the problem, is to, you know, whether it's sliding scale or otherwise, is to change the way that the FARs are calculated to catch more houses.
Okay, so, um, so here's, here's my question is, considering in the context of our push to increase housing diversity in Concord, what do you guys think about when you have a house come before you that's on a non-conforming lot, notwithstanding that it's surrounded by big homes? What do you think about preserving that as a smaller home? Because we can, because it's subject to our jurisdiction, because every single smaller home is one more home that we have that's more diverse, and potentially within reach of a family that's not extraordinarily rich, or is a smaller family, or what have you? So I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm just pushing against that, the standard of looking at the surrounding homes to contemplate whether we approve making smaller homes much bigger.
Well, I'll just add, before I reach for my book, the, the biggest issue for that is that the zoning bylaw deals with a number of factors that we're supposed to look at, including, you know, taxing the various issues around the town. But, but the, the primary one, none of them would go to the notion, I think of, "Oh, we just need a smaller home." And the biggest one that comes into play here is neighborhood character. And so if you have, if you have a bunch of big homes in the area, it's very hard to say that a, another big home in the area is going to change the neighborhood character. I agree with you, Kate, it would change, you know, the housing stock in, in town, but that's, but that has been the issue. And then, I think without a zoning bylaw change, honestly, we were, we're probably stuck in the fact that we've been doing this for, you know, a long time, a lot longer than I've been on the Board, and I've been on the Board for a while. And, you know, the, I, you know, I don't know that any of our town council would like the lawsuit that says, "Wait a minute, you know, you approved this house, 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 and now you're stopping this one." You know, so I think without an action of, which is not that we shouldn't, but without an action of the town to sort of look at that section in the zoning bylaw that talks about the standards that we're going, we're supposed to employ, we don't, I don't think we have the standard that we would be able to do. And again, I'm trying to find my book, but I'm sure that somebody else has it.
I would think it's also much more likely, and where we want to focus more is on sort of the reverse of what you're talking about, Kate, which is, like, we have plenty of areas, especially in West Concord, of like, small homes, but like, there's a very real risk of them turning into tear downs in the near future, and, you know, built, you know, much larger houses that are out of character with the neighborhood. So those are my, you know, more my concern. But it sounds like the way you guys have been describing it with like, you, it sounds like you do get to consider the character of the neighborhood to try to prevent that sort of thing. But I'm thinking of like, sort of, you know, Central Street, down by Cousins Park, that whole area of those, you know, very small homes that, you know, I'm sure every single developer is waiting to snatch them up and tear them down, and build, you know, $1.5 million, you know, 2,500 square feet, but houses, which, you know, 2,500 square feet is small for Concord these days.
Yeah, that's where I feel like you really do also end up with the whole volume as opposed to square foot. I mean, 2,500, it'd be really difficult, honest guys. It would be extraordinarily difficult for us to stop a 2,500-square-foot house in Concord. I mean, just, just be serious. But, but I think that, you know, 2,500, I happen to live in a 2,500-square-foot house, which looks a lot smaller than a lot of 2,500-square-foot houses, because I've got, you know, eight foot or seven and a half foot ceilings, and, you know, that sort of, that sort of stuff, so.
I mean, I guess, I guess what we want to understand is, you know, are there changes that we should be investigating and proposing to that calculation that would perhaps deter developers from coming in? And, you know, as we say, just wiping everything out and turning around and reselling it, that would be more in line with the long-range plan, be more in line with what we are hearing in public comment about, you know, preserving smaller, more diverse, and, you know, in theory, more sustainable houses that are not using as much energy? You know, is it, is it worth looking at that number? We can talk about it now in terms of, you know, yes, there's a sliding scale, but, I mean, what if we didn't dramatically change that ratio, that acceptable ratio, and, you know, so that the houses couldn't be massive? You know, what, what are your thoughts on that?
Or just one thing to add to, I'll just throw in there. The, what I've thought about is like, and I, I don't know if this can already be considered, but like, that ratio be set to reflect what is in the surrounding community, so that you have to kind of stay within, you know, more relevant range to what exists there already.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that what you've heard, maybe was lost in what I said to begin with, but the, the, the way that the floor area ratio for the man-to-managing bylaw is written, the, the zoning Board of Appeals does not think that there are many ways around that. I mean, we have had lots of discussions where we say that it would be really, really hard to exceed this, except in very limited kind of circumstances, like, you know, I want to put a dormer on a, whatever. I mean, that, it's just, you know, 50 feet or something, you know, I'm adding 25 feet or something. So I think that the, the bylaw is written very well from the standpoint of, we want to really hold the line. It's just that the numbers are too big.
So to follow up on that, just to give everybody an idea of what those numbers are, is if you're in residency and you have a 10,000-square-foot lot, the FAR is 36... The FAR is 3,600. If you have a residence B and you have a 20,000 square foot lot, the FAR is 6,000. If you have a 40,000 square foot lot, the FAR is 10,800. And then 80,000 square foot lot, you're up to 20,400. Square feet, so.
Just, just for, just for kicks, the White House is 34,000 square feet.
And there's a house on in Concord that's 22,000.
So how did, how did the FAR threshold? Ceilings get established in the, in the first place?
It took a couple of years and. I, I couldn't tell you exactly.
Is it like, was it a complex? Negotiation between different constituencies here in Concord in terms of like back and forth or? Like developers? Environmentalists? Housing advocates?
Kate, Matt Johnson looked extensively at the existing numbers of housing in Concord. He, he crunched all the, he took everything that we had available to him. And crunched it to come up with, with the, a sliding scale initially. And then there was pushback from the neighborhood saying, you know, why a sliding scale? It should just be one applied to all. And so it was looking at what's reasonable for the existing. Then they had to look at how many lots are non-conforming, how many are conforming? What would be the impact of all of that? And that's how it came, we came to that number. It took several years to get there.
Okay, and if I could just keep asking questions. So my question is, has there ever been? An effort to look at this issue holistically? And I mean, I think we're focusing on it because we're saying, well, what's in, within our powers to make a change? But is there, is there something that anyone in the town has done or a group has done? To look at, like, you know, if this is a problem. What can we do to effectively address it? You know, maybe this is one. This is one way, but you know, maybe there's, is it possible to put a tax on? Building a really large house, you know, other kinds of deterrents? I guess I'm just, I, I feel a little bit like I'm just seeing this one tiny part of it and I'm having a trouble. Thinking about it in context of more holistically.
Bigger houses do pay more taxes.
But I mean, can we be more aggressive, like progressively tax it? Is that pop? Or, you know, you, you tax it and put it into affordable housing, that kind of thing.
I, I, I think that is beyond the, the scope of this discussion between these two boards. And, and that would be. That would be a monumental discussion between. Between almost every group in the community, especially. You, you were talking about finance and the select board and the board of assessors and. You know, town council. You know, what are the legal parameters that, you know, communities can go to those extent? So. And, and I think it's fine to have that conversation, but that's, you know, that's a much larger conversation that's going to take. Much longer than getting a warrant. Together for the end of, by the end of March.
And I think the outside of the scope of the zoning bylaw.
Yes, it's outside.
Undoubtedly, and I, I think my, my problem is not knowing how hard to push this because not knowing whether it's effective relative. To other potential solutions. So it does seem like since this comes up over and over again, there should be some kind of working group. That goes across the different disciplines to make a report that says, here's the problem, here's why we perceive it as a problem. Here's the potential solutions.
So I think that's a valid point and it's one that, you know, we can probably, you know, Marcia and I can convey. You know, whether it's, you're starting with the different affordable housing groups saying, you know. Here's, you know, don't know if this is legally, you know, attainable, but, you know. Would they want to start a conversation, you know, looking at if. You have a house that's, you know, over 6,000 square feet, you pay a slight additional tax that goes into the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't, I don't know, but. Whether that's even legally attainable, but you also have to understand. It might be, you know, legally allowed. But. Both boards have to be realistic in what will pass town meeting. So. It's not saying that it's not worth trying. And get to a point where you, you gauge the community. Conversation, you gauge the support, you ga, you gauge the opposition. And, you know, whether you can move forward or not on that.
And I also think how we frame this in terms of punishment versus incentivizing might be helpful. So I know, for example, Elizabeth, you can correct me when I'm wrong or march on these numbers, but whatever was there about 20% affordable housing requirements in the. What was it over four units or something? You had to do 20, or what was it originally? It just was changed.
For combined business residents?
For combined business, it was 20% and no one ever built under that because it wasn't economically feasible. So while it sounded great and, you know, it, it doesn't work. So I think this, again, I would just like it to be seen more as how do we incentivize as opposed to how do we make sure that no one does this? Because people are gonna want to build, are gonna want to build. So just, I'm, I'm open to having a discussion, but. Less of a them versus us way, I think from our perspective, we haven't seen a lot of, I haven't seen anyone come in with a 20,000 square foot house. I think that we are very cognizant of trying to maintain neighborhood character, meaning that we don't want one giant house in an area. Where there aren't a lot of giant houses, but also balancing the fact that there are individual property rights and that. It's, if there's a whole, I mean, like, like Jim said, we're, we're trying to balance these competing interests. And I think that. While I agree with everything that you're saying that we need to keep that in mind, that there are different interests.
So just to kind of, you know, come back, you know, in, in the years that. You know, I've been back and attending board of appeals meetings. For those applications where people come to expand a non-conforming. You know, structure by more than 50%. In, I'm going to say in the last three years. Definitely within the last three years. The, the manner in which the board of appeals goes forward and evaluates. Those applications and with the, you know, significantly more information that, you know, we have through GIS. And with everything being online, people are getting, you know, more sophisticated and the ability to provide information. And how the board of appeals has, you know, looked at the neighborhoods and evaluated those proposals in relationship to. Here you have this one conforming, you know, non-conforming lot, but it's. It's the only one in a complete neighborhood that's all conforming and. They're, you know, over 20,000 square feet and all those. People need to do is file for a building permit and they can have a house up to 6,000 square feet. Because that's the floor area ratio maximum. And this person has, you know, a 1,300 square foot home and they want to go to, you know, a 3,000 square foot home, but they need a special permit. So. I, I feel that how the board of appeals has been deliberating on these. Applications. Has, has worked to a point. I think the floor area ratio calculations, I think everybody would agree that. You know, a 6,000 square foot home on a 20,000 square foot lot. Is huge and it. You know, it is these smaller homes that are being, you know, knocked down and these larger homes being built. So the possibility of changing the floor area ratio based on zoning district. You know. That's, that's easy to do, you just change the calculation. The hard part will be, what is that right? Square footage for 20,000 square feet? Some people may think it's, you know, 3,000 square feet. Some people may think 6,000 is fine. So it's coming up with. That. That area of compromise where. It can actually pass town meeting. So I, I'm not sure how to kind of start. That conversation. And then to, Jim made one point when he was talking about. For section 7.1.5, the expanding more than 50%. The only criteria for the board is. That the board may by special permit allow such extension, reconstruction, alteration or structural change. Where it determines that the proposed modification will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. So is, is there an, another? Criteria that can be added to that section? Which helps the board further define, you know. What projects, expansions over 50%? Are consistent or? Not detrimental, you know, to the neighborhood? So. That's, that's two items that I can see. Other than that, I think you're talking about much. Bylaw amendments that are much larger and require a lot more community conversation.
And, and so I do think we want to think about it in kind of the, the long term and, you know. What is it that we're working towards and is there something that we can, you know, pass? This year that would be moving towards something that gets, gets passed in subsequent years. You know, certainly thinking about the, you know, the ZBA and how you, the criteria that you use for the 50% expansion. So now we're talking about that versus the floor area ratio number. What criteria do you think would help? I mean, clearly you're seeing more of those. I mean, it was in the 2019 report that, you know, it was just reshared. It was 16 of those applications that came before you. 16 of those change alteration or extension of a non-conforming user structure? Can't tell if it's 16 or eight. Versus, you know, one and two of a lot of other things. And floor area ratio, which is, you know, like you said, hardly ever comes before you because it doesn't need to. So what criteria would help you so that we could preserve that diversity? We could, you know, hopefully preserve, you know, smaller houses?
I mean, I think it's a, we haven't had this conversation as a group. So to me, I, I think we've been, like I said, pretty good about using our restrictions, our ability to restrict by. Neighborhood character to make sure that things are disproportionately large in a, in a neighborhood where things are not large. However, I think it's a more philosophical conversation amongst the board, which we haven't had, which is. Is that right to say like you're small? You, you got to stay small because you're the small house of the neighborhood because too bad you didn't have 10 feet of extra footage or whatever it is. You know, we've always felt like. You're surrounded by conforming lots. It was kind of just by luck that you had very, maybe a very minor non-conformance and it just wasn't right for us to. To put that on that lot. It's another philosophical conversation, I guess, amongst all of us, whether we think it is. I'm not, I'm not sure it is, but.
And that's a good point, but I mean, if, if our bylaws are clear and we say, if you purchase this lot, just kind of like if you purchase in a historic district. This is the restrictions that it comes with. You know, I, I think perhaps we'd see fewer developers coming in and buying that lot, knowing that they're gonna, you know, flip it. For, you know, for better, for worse. I mean, I, I, I feel like we want to be careful for designing things so that developers can maximize their, the, you know, square footage and therefore the, the profit. And really, like I said, you know, preserving, you know, the, you know, livability. Of the houses and then the sustainability of, you know, homes that are more energy efficiency and are energy efficient. And, and, you know, consume less just of a sheer volume. But are there other ZBA members in terms of what you think would help evaluate?
No, I, I just want to jump in, in here. You, you just mentioned. The fact that, you know, a house won't be, developer won't come in if he or she can't. Upsize the house and therefore the house stays more energy efficient. At a smaller house, that's, that's, that's something that you. I, I, my, because my feeling is that if, if a house can't be. Upsized, it will not get modernized. And therefore I, I, I think you're not necessarily doing the community a service with that. So. And, and, and I'm, I'm also feeling, being very cautious to downsize FAR. I think it's gonna, that's going to be a hard road to, road to hoe. And while I think. That these FARs are really big that, that we just mentioned. It's going to be a hard one to. To size them down and I think we should, we better get some good arguments.
So, so I think that's really useful to hear. Can you tell us a little bit more about why you think that's, that's going to be hard? That would be helpful.
Because, because you're, you're taking value away from a homeowner. It's, it's, it's very simple. You know, it's, it's, the value is, is in what, in, in a lot is what all you can do with a lot, you know, the more. Opportunity you have with a lot, the more value, valuable it is, so.
I mean, I would just note though, that the overwhelming feedback we hear from the community and a lot of these community members are owners of these smaller homes are. Fighting and asking for a way to, you know, stop the mantrization, but that would mean they're also arguing against their future, you know. Payout if they were to sell, so. I, I mean, I don't disagree with you that, that effectively would be what's happening, but I still think there's just the overwhelming feedback that we get. Constantly, right, is counter to what you're just saying.
Well, I, 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 maybe you're talking to different people than I'm talking to.
Well, join anyone who are planning board meetings.
Because I would imagine people do come to both meetings, there's some really dedicated people, so. And that's the other thing that we don't have time to talk about now, but it. Process is good.
They are, there are, and they are people that say that what you're saying, but there's. A, a, as I always say, there's these competing interests and that's what we're, we're trying to come up against. I'm not sure I agree, Dale, because some of these numbers are just kind of ridiculous, I think. So, you know, you tell someone. I don't know, I don't know about that, but again, this is where I think you're much, we should, and this is outside of our scope, but. Thinking about incentivizing versus punishing, you know, what would someone gain by be modernizing? What would that get them in terms of a tax credit or something? To encourage as opposed to say, you can't do that because I just, people are going to try to do it.
You know, absolutely, I, I, I think that was, that was, that was a really good point that you made earlier that we need to incentivize, but. Reducing the FAR and that really is, is a little bit my, my point.
Well, Elizabeth.
To where we, to where we want to have the FAR to be. You know, you can't go from 6,000 and then all of a sudden tell people, you can only now build 2,500 or 3,000. Because that's where we want to, right? That's where we want to have the FAR. You, that, you know, so, and I, I'm, I'm not willing to fight to. To have an FAR reduction from 6,000 to 5,000. You know, that's, that's, you know. We want it to be at 2,500. And, and that's going to be a tough one.
So. I mean, I just offered two things. The first is, is that I don't. I, I, my recollection is, is that when Matt was doing this, that they, they lowered it to the point that they thought that they could get it passed. Not that it was the point anyone wanted to be, but you, just to introduce the whole idea of having an FAR. So now that it's introduced and it's been a few years, I think that you can take a shot at lowering it again. You may want to take a shot at lowering, we may want to take a shot at lowering it again through looking at the top two. You know, where you get to get the 22,000 square foot home because that sort of gains momentum. But I think that, you know, the worst thing that'll happen is you get into a town meeting and you find out that. There's, you know, that there's not. A lot of sympathy for it. For lowering the, for lowering the numbers. So I, but I do think that it was, it was always thought of as a, that was a first chance and then maybe we would be able to lower it further. The second thing I'd say is, is that. Oddly enough. The way you could, you could help break the back of the. Somewhat more ordinary situation of the house that's just the non-conforming lot that was, because there's a lot of non-conforming lots in Concord, believe it or not. The way that you could sort of deal with that a bit. Would I think require some change in the way that the bylaw is written with respect to the criteria that the board looks at? Because I do think that. Because I do think that you, the, no board, there's just too much history. There's no board who could change up the way they review the words that are in here right now and start doing it in a different way that wouldn't subject the town to a very successful lawsuit in our, in my opinion. But if you change the criteria, then yes, of course. So I mean, I, I would say that, that a look at the criteria themselves a lot would allow the board to, when it, to get to the point that you're talking about where people buy the house and they see the house and they have the criteria and they're just stuck with the criteria that's there. But right now I think these haven't been changed in a lot of years and, and so you've got a, you've got a long history of what, of how they've been interpreted. It'd be very difficult.
So in the interest of time, because I know we want to talk about some other things. Elizabeth, could we, do we have room in our schedule to have some sort of a public forum? You know, for a couple of, a couple of these issues to get feedback before we have to write a proposed warrant article, proposed change? And Kate, you had something too. Elizabeth, you can think about that while Kate asks her question.
Yeah, Kristen, I, I was just gonna suggest, thinking about the FAR issue, how do we come up with numbers to lower? I would love to have the chance to get a working group going, hopefully with Matt, who has the history of how the first sausage was made. And really advocate to the public and tell the story of why it might make sense to lower in that first session rather than it, it sort of be, to be, to be out of the, first out of the gate and really advocating for something. So I was just thinking back to that question of how do we start? How do we get to the right numbers? Just gonna suggest putting kind of a working group together with maybe someone from the planning board, someone from the ZBA, someone from, Matt's on the.
And so, and so we might need to strongly consider not putting this on this year's town meeting. Yeah, you know, committing to doing a little more research on it and, and being more thoughtful about what we would put on for the following year. That would give us more time for, you know, both the research and education and, and a lot of clearly research went into the, the first bylaw and now we have data. So that we can say, you know, this is what happens. And, and there are the two pieces that we're looking at. So, you know, so Elizabeth, I guess, should the planning board kind of take this back? I want to make sure that, you know, if the ZBA members have any other information that they think of afterwards, you know, that we certainly get that from you to, to kind of shape our discussion about this. And I know you have it on the agendas coming up, you know, for these discussions, but you know, we, we've got to make a decision about anything that's going to be in writing soon.
So just sitting here and kind of just running through numbers to, I guess, to, to everybody's point, I think there, there is a way to change the FAR to be the, some type of sliding scale and you know, whether the, the easiest thing, because you have to understand how it's written, it, it primarily, it first depends on, you know, what size your existing, your lot is. So you could be in a residence B zone district, which requires 20,000 square feet and only have a 12,000 square foot lot. So your FAR is going to be lower than, you know, somebody else with a larger lot. But I, to, to Theo's point and somebody else's point is you could adjust that sliding scale just based on, you know, 10,000, 20,000, 40,000, 80,000. But to, oh, it's Jim's point. But you would also have to then change the, the finding language for under the maximum floor area ratio to have it not be so completely rigid that if, if 20,000 square foot, if you change Residence B and instead of having a factor of point two four, you had a factor of of point, you know, point two, you would end up with a FAR of about, I think like 4,800. I, I'd have to do the math. But if somebody had a 12,000 square foot lot, then, you know, they might only be allowed, you know, 3,600 square feet. And to Theo's point, you, all those people are gonna vote no, because you know, it is their right to, you know, that could be, that's the only thing they have for their retirement is that equity in that property. But if there were some, you know, the waiver provision where the finding that the Board of Appeals has to make is not so completely rigid that there's other things you can look at except the way it's written. You know, it's, I think to Jim's point, I think it says, you know, substantial hardship. And, you know, so is going over the FAR for anybody really a substantial hardship? No, you, you probably have a 3,000 square foot home and that's twice as big as the house I live in. And I don't think, you know, just because you can't have it. I only have one bathroom. When my mom lived here, two would have been great, but is it, was it a substantial hardship? No. So, so I think i- if there was not a valuation criteria that, you know, did allow somebody to go through that process and it, and it was reasonable and that, that can be made. To, to the other side of that, when, you know, you have the, you know, public hearing or you have town meeting, the, the flip side of that is the comments you sometimes hear from people is, well, then we're, we're relying on three people on the zoning board of appeals to, you know, to decide what is reasonable. And, and for some people that, that's not good enough. So they'll just vote no on, on anything because, you know, they don't trust any of the people that are appointed to boards and committees. So I just throw those ideas and thoughts out there when you consider this, but to Kristen, to Kristen's comment a- again, to get a warrant article together that just changes that point two for a factor, you know, that's easy to get a warrant article together that also includes some language that provides the Board of Appeals some flexibility. If you, if it's somebody in, that has a non-conforming lot in their zone district because of square footage, that becomes more challenging. To have a public forum before you draft a zoning bylaw amendment, that would have to happen sometime towards the end of January. And no, I don't think you could draft something within a month and a half.
Yeah, I agree. Um, planning board members, any other questions for zoning board members before we kind of move on to another topic? I mean, it's been really, this is absolutely useful and it's, and it's the information that we need to have and the discussions that we need to have so that we can maybe go do some more research as well.
Linda. I think it would be important before you move on is to at least get a consensus on everybody on, you know, what you should try to do. And Marcia has a statement, but I know Linda had a comment.
I, I just wanted to add, if we're going to be looking at criteria, one of the things that we deal with and I had to get town council to provide us some input on the number of house lots that were created by special permit under a cluster provision that is no longer in the zoning bylaw. And so we have whole neighborhoods that have undersized lots, but they are eligible to have certain aspects of their property. They're considered to be conforming because they were created by special permit. And so what, when we're looking at criteria, we, we might want to talk to those kinds of situations so that zoning enforcement, building inspector will have some clear direction on moving forward.
Thank you. Linda?
I had a question with regard to the concept that Elizabeth mentioned the other day about neighborhood districts. And I wondered if the zoning board has ever considered or neighborhood districts? And if you could select out those neighborhoods that Jim described where you have a lot of small houses and you'd like to maintain that character, would that give the zoning board some extra weight in terms of making those decisions about supporting the smaller houses? And perhaps it would be more of a strategic approach than changing the criteria for large swaths of, of Concord.
We have not discussed that. Elizabeth, I don't even know the mechanism. So what, I don't know what you talked about with the planning board.
So, so Linda speaking to the, the idea of establishing neighborhood conservation districts. And it's, it's a significant process to establish a neighborhood conservation district that requires buy-in from a large percentage of a neighborhood to establish. So it is, it is not something that the planning board or the Board of Appeals could just put a warrant, just, you know, a warrant article on saying this neighborhood is now a neighborhood conservation district. It requires certain percentage of property owners. It requires the establishment of criteria specific to that neighborhood. So in fact, there is one neighborhood in Concord that thought about going that direction and decided that the threshold to get that passed was, and the work needed to implement that was far beyond anything they felt they could get done. And they actually moved forward with thinking about making that neighborhood a new historic district under the Historic Districts Commission. That they felt was easier than trying to establish a new neighborhood, conservation, new neighborhood conservation district. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a huge threshold. That's, that's very difficult and one that I'm not, you know, I'm not sure there would, based on, you know, Theo's comment, you know, people's inherent right to, you know, be able to realize some profit in their, you know, property. I think there would be very, very few neighborhoods that would ever be able to succeed in having that pass.
Okay. So Elizabeth, to go to your point about having some sort of consensus here, Kristen, it does seem like it would make sense for you guys to take back and discuss what you think. What I'm hearing is that it doesn't look like it would be this year, that this would go on the warrant. And that we're happy, I'll just speak for the board to have more conversations about it. We haven't had extensive conversations. So yeah, that's where I would probably leave it. I mean, it's, it's very useful kind of hearing. I feel like we're the, we're the visionary side and you guys are the practical implementation. So I think it's really, we, we've got to have these talks so that we make sure that we're, we're targeting the right thing. Elizabeth Hughes, I, I hear that you'd like us, the board, to kind of come to a consensus. Since we're missing like three members, I, I think it's important to kind of, for us to be able to relay, the four of us that were on this call to kind of relay what we've heard and then maybe get a consensus of the seven. I know that doesn't help you because now we're into late December and January, but because I imagine, you know, Linda, Kate and Haley, you guys some might want to, you know, see it this, this year. And so if so, I want to have that conversation, you know, at, at, at a coming up meeting rather than continuing now, if that's okay with the other three members that are on. Okay. Go ahead.
What I, your, your agenda for next Tuesday? I can, I can put that conversation on the agenda for next Tuesday. You have the deliberation on the Main Street subdivision and then you have the
Pittsburgh Turnpike.
Turnpike subdivision, which they haven't submitted anything. So I'll convey my recommendation for that one to the board later. But you could have this just as a a discussion item to, you know, bring the other three members up to speed and figure out, you know, how you want to move forward, whether it's this year, next year. With an email from the planning board chair to those three to watch this video before Tuesday.
I think that would be good. Since we have about 20 minutes left, I want to make sure we pick the, kind of the next topic to, to get feedback on. You can be on either. And so the, the ones that we had discussed, you know, significantly are, I, I guess perhaps earth removal, because I know you said the, the tree, tree bylaw doesn't, you know, come in front of you much. So the other one you said was how we measure height. So, you know, let's, let's talk about one of those two, because I think those are both big ones.
Yeah. And the height one comes up a lot for us because it kicks us into having to look at variances versus special permits. Jim, do you want to summarize that?
Yeah, the, the yeah, so Malcolm, the, the problem, I would summarize the problem as the following. We have, and Ray can go into some of this detail, but we have a, a situation in which the, the way that height is measured, and I'm certainly going to get this wrong in terms of the technical parts. I'll just, just describe it. The way that height is measured is if you happen to have a lot that really falls off someplace, like you have a very, like it starts out at the street level and then in the back it really falls, that falls off. And so you're putting your houses partly into that area where it's, where the lot falls off. You can end up with a house that doesn't meet the height because of where the height restrictions measured. You can end up with a house that doesn't meet the height restriction that actually looks like every other house on the street. So where we ran into it in, in great detail was in, on Highland Street. Whereas you know, in the back of Highland Street in West Concord, it all drops off into the, into the junction. And so somebody was going to put a house there that from the street would, and, and the neighbors were all there saying the same thing. I mean, there's no, there was no controversy among the neighbors from the street. It would have looked like one more house on Highland Street, same height, same this. It would have been actually shorter from anybody else, but it itself would have violated the rules of the, of, of, because of the way it was of the measurement. And so that's where we run into it the most. It isn't sort of, I'm on a flat piece of grant, ground and I want to put up something that's 45 feet. We have, that's easy. And in fact, we don't really want, we want to have that be a variance because we don't, we want to be able to say, of course you can't do it. So I don't know if it's, but, but what ends up happening is you end up with these situations where everyone who looks at it, including the neighbors, just don't understand it. And in the Highland case, what they would have had to do to make the, the height restriction is to make a house that would be, to build a house that would essentially be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. So I think they.
Jim, I don't, I don't remember. I, I didn't think that the one on Highland was a variance.
It was. Yeah.
But, but I don't, so I'll, I, I can't recall and I'll have to go back and look because the zoning bylaw specifically allows a waiver provision to height in, in the residential zone districts.
Well, that one we struggled with. You weren't there, Elizabeth. So in any event, what I, what I will say, so, so we'll check the facts, but what I will say is, is that, because I know that Elizabeth, the other Elizabeth did a lot of research on it and we were, we were very clearly in the, in a variance area, we thought. But, but the, but any event, the point here on height is that it's kind of, I want, I think it would be worth looking at how we measure it in certain circumstances because you do have these odd situations that the, that the, that the height, the official height of the building based on the way that the property drops off, say someplace in the back front, however it works, really creates a situation where people run into a hardship where there is where there's like no really reason to think that they should run into one.
So is there language in other towns bylaws that, like an if then type of language without incurring unintended consequences? La Marcia?
There's a history here and the, the initial concern, the reason that we came up with the, some of the height restrictions that we did is because of the five, when you, there was a house on White Pond that from the front looked like just a simple two-story, but on the backside from the pond was a five-story structure. And that's what started this whole conversation about limiting height. What got added is the fact that we've, we say it has to be based on original elevation of the land. So if the lot has to be regraded in some fashion and then you have to apply your height based on what was, then we started. Then we started running into the, these kinds of issues that I think Jim alluded to on Highland Street. So, um, it, it, that shows how incremental changes can have a negative impact because you don't think of everything as you're going forward.
So, um, I, I did just check and. Originally Highland might have come in for a, a variance, but it, it wasn't. The decision was granted, um, under the waiver provision under six two eleven. The, but the, this recent example, um, Jim, that you're talking about where, um, it had to be a variance. Was in the PRD section. Um, so everything in the bylaw is, um, a requirement. And you can't go beyond that requirement unless there's another section of the bylaw that's more restrictive. So in the residential zone districts under six two eleven, you have a waiver provision. But under section 10 for the PRD, it specifically said a maximum height of 35 feet. As measured, you know, under the height requirement. And so that was a variance, there was, you, it said shall be a maximum of, there was no ability to waive that. Um, that has since been changed this past town meeting. Um, under the PRD, you can, you now have a waiver provision. So for all residential uses in residential districts. Um, you know, there is a waiver provision now for height. So that can be dealt with.
So Jim, does that address kind of your initial concern?
So I, that's strange because when I, I wasn't at that meeting, Jim, and I had heard that you had voted for a variance and on that. And I was, um, I'm always against variances generally. That's interesting that we voted as a special permit, were we allowed to do that?
Um, yes, yeah, because of the waiver provision under six to 11.
But I do know what you're talking.
A misperception, but I still think it's probably worth thinking about how you measure height. I, I mean.
I spent a lot of time struggling with how height is measured in a bunch of our, um, applications, so, yeah.
So Elizabeth and Marcia, how do we kind of investigate that? And we is probably, you know, your department. I, I know you said you, we, you know, you really did arrive at this based on, you know, seeing something. But is there like a general case that you say, this is going to fit, you know, 80% of the time, you know, this definition is going to work, this measurement is going to work. Um, and then the other 20% of the time we can, you know, do the special permit or something.
I, I think the current way height is measured while it's, um, complicated and Ray would probably be happier if it was easier. Um, I, I think more than 80% of the time it works. Um, I think the ones where it doesn't work is because the property is probably incredibly challenging to begin with.
And that's why they come before the board anyway. Yeah.
Well, then I mean, if you, but the PRD got solved in this latest change.
Yes.
But Ray, I would ask, would, do you have any thoughts on this and how? Oh, no, he's muted, you're muted.
I don't think the calculations are that difficult. It's just taking the, the elevations at all the corners of the house. Getting the average and then you get the 35 foot from the, from the lowest, um, two measurements. So I don't think the calculation is that hard. It's just when you come into these sloping lots that it creates a problem. So, and, but, I, most of the developers have mentioned that our bylaw, the way the wording is, the. They're taking it from four corners, I don't know how the, how the towns do it, but I think they come with a, the, um. Average elevation with a different calculation. Maybe we could look at how other towns do it.
Yeah, I, I was going to add that, uh, I don't think I've seen a, a logic height calculation in any of the zoning bylaws I've read. Uh, in my career, I think, I think they're all. Difficult and all have their, uh, pros and cons, so. I think ours is not bad and as long as we have the ability. To, uh, to use the special permit. Um, I think, I think that goes a long way. I don't necessarily.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
Want to change it.
Yeah, no, it sounds like now that we have the flexibility in the PRD provision, maybe our problem is solved. Although Jim, I reserve the right for us to come up with a, uh, to amend or complain on this for something that we're not thinking of right now.
I sort of remembered passing one that we actually came, figured out a variance and spound a special.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, and.
Problem solved.
Yeah, it, it was particularly difficult in, uh, in the PRD or we ran into problems because you have a bigger lot. And as a result, there is a lot more topography. And, and then, and then you run into a problem, you know, if you have a small lot, it's, it's relatively easy, you don't, you won't have as much topography. Because the, the PRD that we had in, in West Concord, that dropped, lot dropped off in the back. Those houses were affected a lot of lots, yeah.
Um, so with the remaining 10 minutes, would anybody object if we, oh, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, so the, the last item, um, and this is somewhat more of a, um. Of a planning board thing, um, but just want to make the Board of Appeals aware of it. Um, was with this most recent round of amendments to the PRD. Um, one persi- particular section, uh, was a new, um, den- density bonus section. That was adopted under 10.2.3.6. Where that's originally where the affordability, um. The affordability requirement, if somebody wanted to go a, above the basic density, you had the affordability requirement. Um, the, the planning board added, um, two other requirement, well, options. Um, you know, no more than a one-car garage and then, uh, zero-step entry with master bedroom and full bathroom on the first floor. Um, so somebody had come to me and, um, how they are interpreting the language in that section. Um, increases beyond the basic density within the planned residential development may be authorized by the board. Based upon one or more of the following, and then you have A, B and C, those options.
Do you have it in front of you that you can share your screen?
Yep, um, I do not think, um, and I, I'm. But I don't remember the entire conversation. Um, that there was ever an intention. Let me close everything in the background. There was ever an intention of not requiring. A affordable con, you know, affordable units if somebody wanted to go above the basic density. So how the person was interpreting, well, if I offer B and C, then I don't have to do A. Because it's based upon one or more of the following. And I think. I, I'm going to have the planning board discuss it again, but I think it's based upon. Either A. Or. A and B or A and C. I'm not sure there was an intention of allowing a PRD go above the basic density. With a density bonus by just providing B and C. But again, I'd have to go back, this was over a year and a half ago and I can't remember yesterday. So I'll have to go back to the discussion that the board had, but. Um, this may be another clarifying warrant article that. And I see, so everybody, um, town council even agreed that yes, somebody could easily interpret it the way this person did, so.
But it's also not a, it's not a required authorization, it's still subjective to the planning board, right? So, I, I agree.
It's subjective ultimately, you know, the planning board's recommendation and ultimately by the Board of Appeals, yes. But I, I think it creates a, an ambiguous ambiguity that doesn't need to be there. So I just want to, um, make that, you know, everybody aware of that.
That's something we might remedy this year with a change in clear, clarifying that language.
What do we want it to say?
What was that, Jim?
What do you want it to say? Because I mean, I, I easily can say that it, that if it's least 50% or less than 2,500 square feet, you got the basic density increase, but.
Um, so this is, this is for a density bonus, so if somebody wanted to go beyond. Um, beyond the basic density, you have to provide, you know. One or more of these following elements. Um, I don't think there was ever an intention of a project coming through where they asked for. Um, a density bonus with no affordable component, no affordable units in it.
Got it. Okay, but I can certainly understand the, the point. And I agree that might as well clarify.
Um, so now I have to figure out how to, to. And I can't figure out how to make this bigger.
Your screen?
No, how to, oh, there it is, I found it.
All right, so it seems like the, the planning board will look at how to make that language, how to clarify that language, correct?
Well, I think either clarify it or maybe that was the intention. If, if, I don't think it was the intention of one or more. Because if somebody only provided, you know, homes with a one-car garage. But you wanted 10 units over the, um, basic density, I don't think that was the intention.
Right, okay. We, we'll go back and check our notes too, um. A- as well. Um, I know we are, are kind of drawing to a close of our meeting time and we did not get to earth removal. But Elizabeth, can you just kind of summarize? Um, and then I know at least one other person on the, on the planning board had a, um. Had a question and, and I'd like, you know, Haley, if you have a quick thought about earth removal. In, in the research that you've done, I just wanted you to be able to share it with the ZBAs so they can think about it as well.
Um, well, the bylaw amendment would be simple, it's, you know, it's earth removal and fill. So it's either, you know, over a thousand cubic yards of either removal or, or a thousand, thousand cubic yards of fill. Um, the exemptions would stay the same. Um, and, you know, the requirements would, you know, the findings and everything, the language. Um, would all be the same and, um, so it's just amending it that, you know, if you're going to bring. Um, you know, over a thousand cubic yards of fill in, um, it would be the same provision as if you were taking. Over a thousand cubic yards of fill out.
Thanks, and Haley, did you have a, a specific question about? This.
Um, I mean, I. I do, but I can just start with Elizabeth offline, um, just. I just, I read it for the first time, like, a few days ago, so, um, just getting familiar with it and. Was reading some others, um, in other towns in Massachusetts at the same time, so, um, just go from there.
I have a, a quick, just comment, I, I've, for a couple of years I've been thinking about tying this amount of earth. Work with. Um, requiring archaeological surveys. And, uh, it'd be so great if we could. At least, like, if you're, if you need a permit like this. Have a fee that goes into fund, funding archaeological, uh, permits or, um, work around town. Because we just, we're, we lose so much, uh, archaeological information when we do this much earthwork. And I don't think we acknowledge that, we acknowledge all the other environmental permit, um, impacts, but, so it just like, throw that out there.
Um, I don't, I don't think the town would legally have the ability to, to put a fee on anybody who's doing earth removal. You know, above a thousand cubic yards to pay for something that's, you know, somewhere else in the community. Um, but I, you know, we may, you know, Marcia and I may be able to ask some other, you know. Those historic resource groups, whether, if you are coming in for a special permit and you're within an area that has been defined as some type of national heritage. Um, area for, you know, archaeological, um, items that you need to provide that information. That may be a possibility.
We, we already do that in the subdivision rules and regulations anyway.
But not under zoning.
Correct, um, there is a, we, there is a resource that, uh, has identified, um. At least the Native American sites, uh, in the community and that's the purview of the Historical Commission. So they, they do comment on subdivisions and we have made that a requirement in other decisions in the past.
Kate, is that covered under SHIPPO? I mean, don't, doesn't a developer have to consult with them anyways?
I think if they need a state, if they need a state permit, they do.
They need federal permits.
Well, that's only for federal?
And state, sorry, I over, I spoke over Marcia, state and federal.
Well, then in A Corp, well, one site in mind, never mind.
Yeah, I mean, if we, we, if we wanted to push the envelope a little here, we could have an applicant demonstrate that the site wasn't previously disturbed. And if it wasn't, then they have to do a survey rather than having it, you know, the, uh, rely on a more limited list of identified sites. A- again, I'm sorry, this is beyond the scope, I'm.
I was just going to say, every site, every place in Concord has been disturbed, uh, it, to some degree. Because there, we've, we've totally denuded back in the 17, 1800s, this land had no trees on it. The, the reforestation that's come back over time. We now have forests again, but we, there is no, uh, original growth forest in Concord.
But that still opens up the possibility of having artifacts from the 17th or 18th centuries, right? Maybe, I'm not, not just limiting us to Native American prehistory. I'll leave it at that because I, I think I'm going off on a tangent. But thank, thank you.
So it, it is 4:30, I know we were going to conclude by then, but I realize, um, were we planning to, uh, include public comment?
It, it's up to the two boards, it's. You're not required to take public comment, but you can.
I, I know people have patiently waited, so if, if, uh, folks could, could hang on the line, uh, for a minute, I'd, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Um, and I believe you can raise your hand. And then we will, um, we will, uh, do that. And you'll, I, I'm seeing somebody called TMBG, we'll call on you and if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi, it's Tanya Gielis, hi, um, discussion, thank you, um.
Would you just remind us of your address, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem, 62 Prescott Road, thanks for the discussion. Uh, if, just a few quick feedback items. Um, one is about the thought about deciding whether, uh, uh, certain new construction is or is not suitable. In a new neighborhood, of course, uh, one fact is that the more the large houses get, um, added up. The more the appearance changes. Um, and Haley mentioned West Concord and other such vulnerable neighborhood is ours in East Concord off of Bedford Street. So that's something to keep in mind in the balance. Um, and, um, for many of us, I note that it's, it's when the trees are lost that is. A cause for, um, sadness in, you know, not just us as a family, but many of our neighbors too. Um. And as far as the, um, town meeting concerns go, I, I have observed that there is a lot of. Affordable housing support and a lot of small houses support, so. It really does come to the numbers and, um, the community does seem to support. Smaller houses and tree preservation these days, so. Um, yeah, of course, uh, some people will object to having their rights limited in terms of how much. How big a house they can build on their hand, land or whatever, but. Um, anyway, just to keep in mind that it's okay to try, I would say. And the, um, and, and, and it's, uh, thank you for bringing up the archaeology. Uh, concern too, that's, that's great and it's great that some things are being done about it like Marcia explained. But that's great to keep in mind for the great discussion.
Thank you. Um, the other hand I see up is Pamela Drit.
Hi, thank you, um, uh, Pamela, 13 Concord Green, Unit Four. Um, and I appreciate all of the things that you guys are doing. And I know it's frustrating with us, kibitzers. But since we're in a climate crisis. And we do have the town's sustainability principles. And housing is one of the main users of fossil fuels and we can't get carbon neutral without significantly changing our building standards. And since the state legal requirements are way behind. Like the stretch code, um, could we use, um, your ideas for incentives? Uh. To get There's really no excuse for new to be net zero now, because it doesn't cost much, and it sometimes saves a lot. Even if you don't count the the climate benefits. And It it costs less, not much, to build that way, no matter what size the building is. It can't, could we legally make an incentive by allowing Larger or or making other waivers for Buildings if they are all-electric net zero passive house standards, would that be even legal? Could we do that?
The the town could not make that a requirement. That's not, that is not legal. The The idea that the board discussed previously about whether There could be some type of incentive if somebody were to To build that, that again is a much larger discussion that would have to entail A a much larger group than just the planning board and the zoning board of appeals.
Can we do that? Because that is, we're kind of under a time crunch with the climate crisis, and we really have to do it, right?
I I think the, that idea would have to be extended to the Finance Committee, the Select Board. The You know, I don't know if the, you know, Board of Assessors would, you know, they would have to be involved. And so All of those That might be something that you, you know, you would like to, you know, throw that out there to all those others and But it's definitely Not something, because it's not a zoning item, it would have to be some type of general bylaw. Because it deals with town finances. So it's not something that the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals could be, you know, the initial sponsor on.
Thanks, it it sounds like, you know, we have some items to talk about with multiple, multiple committees anyway, so we need to kind of Line line those items up, this has been a very useful discussion, were there any other Questions, comments from the board members on the phone or on the line?
No, I just thank you, Kristin, for arranging this, I think it's great for us to Meet and talk collaboratively, as opposed to operating in two separate bubbles completely, so thank you, and thank you, Elizabeth, for all your work, kind of summarizing everything. Appreciate it.
Yeah, this, this, this is great, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
This was great, I hope to be able to sit in the same room with you folks sometime soon.
Thanks, Elizabeth, you too.
Thank you, everyone, have a great day.
Thank you.